All right, she needs to go over five with the microphone.
Good, how about you? They just got the lawnmower. That's what, still broken?
Yep, chest of the boot for a week and a half then. And then we go back to some more referees to see if she can stop wearing the boot and just wear a brace.
Yeah, just felt bad after.
I was walking through. Yep, she kind of weighed on it, but she has to keep it on.
No more scooter, no more. That's pretty lucky.
Kind of a pain. Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Well, it's no way. He's gonna make you wait. Well, come please, she's waiting around here.
Yeah. He's like, oh yeah, I've been doing something too.
Like, I just wouldn't know, like, no, I got it in my head.
To me.
And that's the name of, giving him grief. Evil. When I walk outside, like, you tell them, the city council members highly disapprove with him for making the wait.
All right, I'll give a clock vote for the order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank everybody for coming tonight. We will go ahead and do roll call. Deb?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Megan? Sarah?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
So move.
Second? Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
On the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve.
Motion second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, updates and presentations by the city council chair.
Sure, a couple of updates. Most of my updates will be later on when we talk about specific things, but one that's not on the agenda is that there's gonna be a veterans' ride coming through town July 12th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. or 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Originally, they asked to close down West Mission Street. Been talking with the chief and other stakeholders and thought that that was probably a bad idea. So, we're gonna close down East Mission Street. We can fit all the bikes there. Supposed to be about 700 motorcycles and like 50 or so classic cars. So I thought, close down East Mission. Been working with the neighbors over there to make sure that they have ingress and egress from their properties. And, so, and the Chamber and Rodden Cows. Great coordinating with the police. Everything is going pretty well. So, we'll do, that'll be a nice event. It'll be good for our local businesses. And then, you know, it's, this is the first one of me being on board of this magnitude, so I just didn't know if the city council wanted this as like a resolution or if I would just, you know, give it to you as an update. So I just chose give it to you as an update. I figure there wanted to be a vote on it, you guys could tell me. And then, that is it on updates that are not related to other items on the agenda tonight. So I'll wait for those.
All right, we'll move on to the new business. Resolution 2525, amending the contract between City of Strawberry Point and Verizon Wireless to authorize equipment modifications to the existing installation.
I make the motion for Resolution 2525, amending the contract between the City of Strawberry Point and Verizon Wireless to authorize the equipment modifications to the existing installation.
Motion second. Motion second.
Great, thank you. So as a, as a resolution states, this is a, an amendment to the existing contract. They wanted to upgrade some of their equipment, antennas, so on and so forth. So they asked about a month and a half ago, you know, if they could amend it. And I said, you know, we don't know much about the engineering, so I asked them to produce a engineering report. So they had engineers come out and produced a very detailed report, which I have here. If anybody is really bored and having trouble sleeping, there's lots of data tables and interesting stuff. But basically, the engineering report, excerpts of which are in your packet in their application, suggests that the work that they're proposing to do will have no net difference. You know, about the same weight that they're putting up, that they're taking down, so, so that was good. And then we have this nice engineering report about the water tower, which, you know, we can use in other capacities maybe. So, we'll publish this report at some point on the website and have it in a place where people can read it. And that's it. I don't know if you have any questions about it. I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer those questions, but other ones I, I could probably take a shot at.
Mayor?
Yes.
When will this be done? I assume in the summer here at some point.
They're shooting for late summer, early fall. Yeah, they don't have an exact date yet. They wanted to wait until there was a vote in the city council to approve it before they went on and scheduled it.
And that will have no, well, it's already there. They're just, they're updating.
Correct. They already have a lease for space. They have brackets up there already with equipment and antennas, and they're gonna be using all of that existing stuff and just basically replacing and upgrading the equipment that's already there.
Thank you. And I'd like to comment on the contract. If you read through it, it says they're not adding any new brackets. They're going to be taking off hold and using what's there.
Yeah.
And I was very interested in that, since we had another business that put their stuff up there that kind of destroyed part of the
Yeah.
water tower.
Yeah, we went back and forth with them plenty of times and, you know, basically told them like, we just had this thing painted, we just had it repaired. You know, we wanna know exactly what you're doing, what brackets, everything. And so they gave a very detailed report, which I'm pretty happy about.
Yeah, I was quite pleased with the report.
Yeah.
Should be no impact upon water quality or anything like that.
Zero.
Nope. And payment remains the same, though they're not paying us any additional anything.
Correct.
Yep. All right, any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Number eight, Resolution 2526, authorizing payment of the city's insurance renewal invoice, the backbone insurance O.L.
I'll move the resolution, authorizing payment of the city's insurance renewal notice, backbone.
Motion second. Motion second to approve the Resolution 2526.
Great, so you can see there's an invoice here. Our insurance costs, we made several little modifications here and there. We upped a couple of deductibles here and changed some, some insurance levels on various things. The company was not able to give me the breakdown of this by department until like literally like minutes ago. So I can email everybody. You can see the, the net amount really is about the same as last year. You know, maybe a thousand or two different. So we were really able to get some savings by increasing the deductibles on some low-risk items from, you know, a thousand to 2,500 on vehicle stuff. So we went through painstakingly, department by department, looked at ways to save. We upped the insurance on the strawberry, like, we noticed that the strawberry was grossly underinsured. If it were to like blow off and break, we would not be able to afford it to have a new one. Right, exactly. So, so we upped the insurance on that. This is the invoice. The only reason the invoice is here without the by department detail for you is because the insurance company has to front this money. And so I said, I'll put the invoice through and then I will email the council the detailed department by department breakdown, you know, after the fact, you know, if you guys are okay with that. So that's kind of where we're at. Very pleased with this, that the, you know, I know in years past, it's been hard to sort of get everything on one invoice and then have everything broken down by department. So, the insurance company did a great job, like, really going through. We had, I don't know, four or five sessions in the back room where we just went through and it, I feel like we did a very complete review on this and feel like we're properly insured across the board now, so.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes.
Be new here. Are the police and fire department equipment included in this, or is that a separate?
Yes, no, this, this is across the board. And so what happens is, the police and fire, like, the vehicles are on a vehicle policy. Workman's comp is on a workman's comp policy. So all of the departments of the city are integrated into this invoice, but it doesn't separate out police cars from fire vehicles because they're all considered vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but on the detailed breakdown, you'll see each department and how it, how it adds up. It does equal the same amount. It's personal evidence. These are equal. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah? Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Number nine, Resolution 2527, establishing the Strawberry Point Pool Committee.
Madam Mayor, I move we establish the Strawberry Point Pool Committee.
Motion second to this board.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Great. So as we've been discussing, we have, you know, the proposal for the Strawberry Point Pool Committee. And I believe I've emailed you all of the initial bylaws. I've also printed them for your packets. There's one note, in the original bylaws that we wrote, I had seven voting members. But in the initial committee meeting, we had eight people that wanted to serve on the board, so I said that I would change it. So, the only thing different in these, in these bylaws is the number of voting members. And then, there was another clause added later. It's in your printed one. And that's just basically like clause for any sort of disbandment. So, you know, like, we've had a lot of committees over the years, just, you know, from what I've heard, that, you know, just kind of fade away. This is a clause in here that, you know, if there's like three monthly meetings that are completely missed and nobody shows up, then, you know, then we would disband the, the thing. And then also, the committee could vote to disband itself with a majority vote, or the city council could vote to disband the committee. That's just normal pro forma stuff that the council has the authority to do.
So with these members, what happened with the tie?
Well, it's, they're only making suggestions and not policy. So typically, if they're gonna argue about this and that and to make suggestions, they can work that out. They're really not voting formally on any policy issues. So in the, if there's really is a split and like half the people, half the members think it's terrible and half don't, then they can put that in their minutes. And then we would present both sides to the city council and you, as the, the policy body, would make the final call on it, so. But hopefully, everybody's working together to, you know, come to a consensus. I think that's a better model and more productive, so. So that's kind of, and then the chair could also decide not to, not to vote if the chair so agrees.
So for, for eight, is it five or six?
Five.
Okay, so it's gonna be five.
Yeah, formals typically, yeah, half plus one. And so that's, yeah, so that's good. I'm very pleased with the meetings that have happened so far. They've been very productive. We've got good minutes from them. Once the committee is formed officially, then, then they have to abide by the Open Meetings Act, so we will have published minutes, published agendas, so on and so forth. So, and then if you have any questions, the chairperson, I believe, is sitting in the chair.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are, are there, there are term lengths that are assigned one-year and two-year terms? Are there term limits? Can one be reappointed to the board and, or to the committee? And if I'm a two-year term person, I will be appointed to a two-year?
Yeah, so you'll see.
Another two-year term?
Yes, in the, in the next resolution, you'll see the original members and when their terms end. So typically with the committee, there's not a term limit. There are term lengths. And so each person that's been assigned a staggered term at the beginning, so that there's a continuum of leadership every year, then, you know, they can be reappointed to a full term, as you know, on their following one. In fact, the, the two-year termers could get another two years. A one-year timer that comes up next year will be able to have a two-year term after that.
Oh, even though they're a one-year term?
Yeah, the only reason they're one is for the initial year, so that all of the terms are staggered.
I get it, yeah. I didn't realize that. I have, I have another question. The subcommittee, is that going to be made up of members on the, on the main committee, the pool committee? Or is that new people appointed or combinations, or how will that work?
Right, that will be up to the committee to decide. I've suggested to the committee that the subcommittees not have more than two voting members of the committee, so that they can have working subcommittee groups without having to publish an agenda in minutes. You know, like, they're gonna get together and work on stuff. For example, if they have volunteers, we don't wanna have to publish a public meeting if they're gonna go and clean up or have a, you know, have a grant meeting or something like that. So, I've spoken to the chair about that. We're gonna keep the subcommittees to, or maximum of two voting members. And then if there's other members that want to be part of a working group, that's up to the committee to decide. You know, maybe for like grants, they have four or five people looking for grants at any given time, you know.
So will there be a, a number assigned for the different duties that a subcommittee might be taking up at any given time?
Absolutely, yeah.
So there might be two or five or whatever the time that the
Yes, or like, typically the meeting would be, okay, we're having a subcommittee meeting. And if there are four or five other people that wanna come and join the meeting, not necessarily as voting members of a subcommittee, but working group members or volunteers or whatever, those meetings would be open to those people. So essentially, they could have a subcommittee that has four or five people that are doing some labor and some work in those subcommittees, but not necessarily as voting members, you know, of the pool committee itself. So think of it like a working group within a committee.
With some assigned members of the official sort of pool committee, plus others that are kind of, that are interested in the subject or knowledgeable about it, that would be working with them and voting with them to approve on the same level.
And at the subcommittee level, there's not gonna be a lot of voting, right? The subcommittees are usually working groups. So, and we wanna make these working groups as inclusionary as possible. You know, we, we've really pressed the idea of having, you know, youth voices in that. So think of the subcommittees as working groups and the full committee as a voting committee to make recommendations to the city council.
Okay, I understand that, yes.
All right, any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you all for opening up. All right, number ten, Resolution 2528, appointing a chair, vice chair, and voting members of the pool committee.
Motion second.
Motion second to this.
All righty, so we have this resolution. The, at the initial ad hoc meeting of the pool committee, we sort of had a show of hands, who wants to be on the, on the committee as a voting member. There were eight people during that meeting. Those eight people were able to then pick a chairperson. Then there's Daryl Severson over here and Katie Backenstedt as vice chair. And then, and then the other voting members would be Randy Timmerman, Sarah Hawkins, Meg Gellner, Ron Landis, Kathy Picker, and Tara Sherman. And then their terms are all listed on the resolution itself, and you can see that they're, they're staggered. They were staggered randomly, you know, we just put 1-2, 1-2, 1-2, and just mixed up the, the applications. All of the voting members have been, presented the city code of ethics and the, and have abided by that, as well as the conflict of interest statement. And we've signed acknowledgements from each of the committee members of those two documents. And I did stress in the meeting the importance of adhering to that. You know, this is an official committee of the city and, and as such, like, a higher level of transparency and a higher level of ethics is, is expected. So, we went over some of the pitfalls of what happens when, you know, the, that code of ethics is not followed and, and everybody was, was happy to receive those documents and acknowledge, received them. So, these were the original eight people in the resolution.
Great.
Senator?
Yep.
The meetings will probably be here?
Most likely, yes.
So that, and they, the minute, the agendas will be published so that people can come in and
Yes.
observe the meeting.
Yes.
Is that true with the subcommittee with this one?
No, the, the subcommittees will have a little bit more autonomy. Yeah. And because, you know, the subcommittees is generally where the work gets done. And so they can't be, you know, handcuffed with the, you know, the process. And again, they're not gonna be making any policy changes or suggestions or anything like that. So, the committee meetings themselves will be held here. The intent is to have them recorded for posterity and transparency. The easiest place to do that is here, because we have the, you know, set up already. And then, you know, and that way we can publish minutes, we can publish video, put it on the website for everybody to have access to.
And those will be on a Wednesday prior to a council meeting?
Initially, that's the thought will be that they're in the weeks in between board meetings or council meetings. We're not stuck on Wednesday, so if that date changes, that's totally fine with us. That was just an initial suggestion. So, we'll work with the chair and make sure that the meeting dates are flexible and also that all of the Open Meeting Act's rules and regulations are being adhered to.
All right, any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Number eleven, Resolution 2529, approving and authorizing execution of an operation and maintenance assistance agreement with Carico Aquatic Resources Incorporated.
I still make the motion for Resolution 2529.
Motion second. All right, motion second.
Great, so this is a pro forma measure. Basically, this is for chemicals and some operational machinery at the pool. So this will be nice, 'cause we're getting chemicals from this company and we're also able, in this agreement, to lease some equipment to handle those chemicals. So, along with it will come some maintenance guarantees and so on and so forth. So, I, I don't have too many details on this, other than this is what our team suggested in terms of chemical procurement and, and this gives us a little bit of insulation from, you know, mechanical failure and stuff like that, so.
So this is for?
For the pool.
For the chemicals?
Correct.
So all chemicals are included in that, plus?
Yes. Yeah, and they're, they're less this year, because we're, you know, we, we have a whole month of chemicals that we don't have to use. So, we had enough chemicals to get the pool full and get the initial pH level to normalize, and so we're saving about a month's worth of chemicals because of the delayed opening.
So this has no real effect on what our, what Eric and Garrett are currently doing?
No. No.
And I did talk to Eric today, and they wholeheartedly support this, this company.
Uncommon company, which rather works with the poor, or is it a different one?
Different.
Different. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Larry?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Number twelve, Resolution 2530, approving a class E liquor license for strawberry foods.
I'll move.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second Resolution 2530 for the liquor license for strawberry foods.
Motion second.
Super, so if you remember some months back, we voted on a strawberry foods liquor license. It was, when we went into the system, this is a different class liquor license. The state has changed a few things, so we might have to be redundant in revoting on a couple of these items. This is one of them. So, this is for a full liquor license, allowing for beer, wine, and, and spirits. So that's, that's what we're voting on tonight, and they are in compliance and everything is up to date.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And the other business?
We have no other business. Do you guys have any other business?
Tonight, that's what the status of staff for the school is? Like, are we doing manager, do we have?
Yeah, so do you guys wanna give an update, or do you all need to? Yeah.
We are going to be doing interviews tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:30. No, I lied. 1:00 to 4:00. And then Monday, we are doing them 1:30 to 4:30.
Okay.
So we have contacted all of the applicants and asked them to sign up for a time slot. They're gonna be about 15-minute increments. Kristen Ostrander, myself, and then Kara will be doing interviews on Thursday. And then on Monday, it's myself, Kristen Ostrander, and then Meg Gellner will be on Monday. So, we'll get those people interviewed and, yeah.
Great, and the city has also extended a, an offer letter to Kristen to act as pool manager for this year. So, waiting to get the acceptance back via email, but we anticipate that that will be happening.
So those will be, say that again, they'll be
Thursday and Monday.
Thursday, this coming Thursday and Monday.
And then Monday. We're trying to get it done relatively quickly, just so that we can get them, we've talked with people for certification and stuff. So, we are trying to get back to that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any word on opening day?
Not yet. So the pool is going to get filled very soon, and obviously slowly, you saw what happened in Alcatraz, they busted a pipe. So the pool will get full, then they'll shock it with the chemicals, and then we're at the mercy of the pH level and where it goes from there. But they have been working on it in an accelerated fashion. And, you know, as soon as we have a target date, we'll share that. Obviously, as soon as possible is our, our target. But those guys, you know, they wanna over-deliver and under-promise, and I understand that. They don't wanna put a, you know, tricky date out there and then not be able to meet that, so. And then also, the, the pool committee has offered to volunteer to do, you know, some projects down there. Talked to Pam with the insurance company. We got the approval today to have volunteers be able to do some, some lighter duty stuff. So, I have a list of about 10 or 11 projects that need happening down there. I'll be working with the committee to give that to their volunteer corps, and, you know, that will help to make the pool area look great and, you know.
Somebody went down, I think the garden company did the, the hospital, so that looks really nice.
Yeah, yeah, it looks really nice. So, it's great to have, you know, that extra labor and that extra interest in the pool. And, you know, I think it'll, it'll, you know, they'll be able to make it look nice and, yeah, and I was happy to get the, the green light from the insurance company that, yeah, that's all good.
I have to try and update on the pickleball court.
Pickleball court is a little, we're in a pickle, on the pickleball court. We've been going back and forth with the company. The company did assure us that they would come and make repairs. The company did assure us that they would come and make repairs, you know, on, which is under warranty. And about a week and a half ago, they quit responding to our emails. So going to give them another couple of days, a couple of phone calls. And if they don't respond, then we'll send them a very strongly worded letter. And we'll have some legal language in it.
And last thing I have, everything's ready for strawberry days?
Yeah, we have the brief from In-Home. Sorry, I'm ready to go. I talked to the fire team at the other day about that, some help with traffic control and stuff like that. Want to work with those guys. So, yeah, we got John from the academy, see that Friday night, took the help of the county and then Saturday, they're welcome. So we think it's time with the family.
Go back.
Yeah, other than that, no, everything's good. Staffing looks good. We're open to be out, so.
Good deal.
Didn't I hear the police chiefs leading the parade?
That was the rumor I heard, too. I haven't known them yet. Oh, yeah, I think so.
You got to bring it up.
Yeah, and then last year, correct me if I'm wrong, we lived in a center vendor. Except last year, so I think kind of what our plan is, is I'll lead and then as soon as I'm through, break loose and probably grab a pickup, one of the city works pickups and then start picking up cones. Lila is going to be a roper for medical emergencies to get to and accidents and things like that. We'll be ready to go for that. And then as soon as, as soon as I'm through, we'll start picking up cones and getting cleaned up.
Great, thank you.
Good plan. I'm glad everything's working out so well. Appreciate it for you guys.
I should say too, there's a person who's trying to paint the chair, the seats out here. Painting, priming the paint and all that kind of thing. I know her. And I am her gopher. And I think we're going to try to get the red painted here in the next day or two.
Okay, good. And let her know that I have the four-by-four, the one that's split.
Oh, the one that's, yeah.
That's my project, yeah. I'll be replacing that hopefully before she gets the paint done. Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.